First meeting order, please stand with the flag. The flag may be released to the flag of the United States of America. We consider the republic for which it stands one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Have a roll call, please.
Mayor, Ms. Smith.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Agman.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Prant.
Here.
Alderman Arbester.
Here.
Mayor, we have a forum.
Very good. Move for approval of the agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay.
Bye.
Takes us to the city administrator's report.
Okay, you got an updated report at your seat. I'm gonna start on the back page. No, it's not. The mayor and I attended the commissioners' meeting this morning with the health department and the commissioners. The sheriff was there as well. Started talking about what to do about masks and COVID, social separation, and social distancing and all that. And with the discussion, it was, you know, what do the, what do they, what do, what does the county have in the way of regulatory rights? Which are very limited by state statute. Most of it lies with the health department. The health department has discussed and looked at what to do about mask-wearing, what to do about social distancing. They believe that their policies are proper at this time. And they want to just continue educating and pushing that information out. And trying to get the businesses to participate more to encourage their customers. But if they participate, then maybe the customers will also follow suit. So we're not going to, we're not looking at anything regulatory coming up. As a city, we're not looking at anything regulatory at this time. But we are still in contact with those groups and we will continue to coordinate and get that information out.
Kathy, was there any discussion about the health department reinstituting their phases? As we were kind of reopening, they had a couple different phases and several steps. Was there any discussion of going back to that approach?
No. And I don't, right now, it's kind of, the health department's a little bit disarray without having a director. And I understand that's gonna hopefully be corrected next Monday. So, but there was no discussion of that. And they're, they're undermanned, they've, they've, they've lost, one person's retired, they don't have a lot of help over there. And they're struggling because they're getting a lot of phone calls and it's, it's been tough. And it, because it used to be we had some really good communications. We talked about that, more communication. We talked about having the newspaper and stuff like that, so. Yeah, we'll put it on Facebook, we'll pretend to do our part, county will do their part. We just feel that's, at this time with what the county is experiencing, the health department feels like we're in good shape. We just need to get that message out there.
Is there plans for a, kind of like a formal declaration, if you will? Like a formal letter similar to like what St. Francis County had released from their commissioner's office to basically state, "We support and encourage wearing masks" and stuff like that, signed by the commissioner's office and released to the public?
Yeah, I'll answer that question. We did decide that today with the, with the commissioners, with the mayor, and the health department to recommend, recommend, just as the health department, the wearing of masks. You know, it's a recommendation. It's not mandated, but we highly recommend it, so. And that should be, that'll be coming out, that'll be hitting the news here, well, it'll be in the newspaper probably next week, but should be hitting whoever did.
Toilet tomorrow.
Okay.
Was this, was this a special meeting or are these held regularly?
No, they, the commissioners hold their meetings every Monday and Thursday. And I had fielded a couple calls this week about it from a couple concerned citizens, so. And I had some other conversation, not a lot, I had two calls over this issue and one email. And, but I felt to, because I've always, always been with this whole thing, all the way through the beginning of this, I'm on board with the commissioners and in the health department. We're, we, all in agreement and unified. The only thing that happened was with the, and the biggest breakdown we had was in communication with the health department because they got overwhelmed and they lost their director. And even that, because Sandy Bell was at every one of their meetings giving updates. So, they're gonna do a good, they're gonna do a better job of giving updates to, and not only to get it out in the newspaper, but to have Don maybe put it on the, on the radio. Because there are some older folks that don't have, the only information they get is from the newspaper or listening on the radio. You know, so, just to get updates out there so we know what's going on. But to, to active, to, to watch, that number is going up, but you gotta really watch those active cases. And right now, there's like 16 of them, you know, the, you know, and we ask a lot of questions about it too, so. My intent is to see what the health department puts out and work with them and try to, we'll grab that information and we'll start passing it out to our leadership partners as well and ourselves.
And if the health department ever says, or has any recommendations for how we can help them, please let us know.
And if you, and if you've got questions, don't, don't be afraid to call over to the health department, talk to Julie. You know, I called her yesterday and had a talk with her, you know, but she's a bit overwhelmed right now, so.
I can imagine. Is there any kind of formal communication that's gonna go on specifically to businesses in the county?
Not that it was decided today.
Okay.
That's up to the health department, so. Everything's driven by the health department, so. And that, and in the beginning of that, everything, because I had a problem early on with, with a business in town and the health department took care of it, so it's all comes through the health department.
On number six with the census drill, is that 76.5% of that nationally or?
Yeah, that's nationally. I didn't have any breakdowns for local.
Okay.
So, they're just gonna start wrapping up whoever's out doing data collecting, they're gonna stop at the end of September and then it's just online over.
Oh, okay.
Item number seven, we received the signed document from the National Park Service. So the agreement that we signed on transferring eventually the Welcome Center and working with the Parks Department on all of their sites that they have in town. If Chris Collins here, if he has anything he wants to add, that, as they work towards becoming established.
I just wanted to come tonight to deliver a hard copy and say, thank you. I really expected to show up tonight to hear a second reading and another vote a month ago and so I was really pleased to hear that it received a second reading and was approved unanimously. It's a, it's a huge deal. I love the teamwork effort and I look forward to working with everyone in the future. It's a great, a great partnership.
And I, and I got a call from Mike Ward today, who's the director at the Arch, and he's really excited about it. And Senator Blunt is adamant about getting this done. And they're, and they're adamant about making it happen, so. So that helps getting all the information together so you can deliver that on the first, or in October, right?
Right, that's, that's the hope. And we're working on putting together a notice to the public, to the federal register. That's what we'll go to secretary for approval so that we can be established.
Okay.
Plan is this fall, hopefully in October.
All right. Otherwise, any questions about anything else that's on our report?
Thank you very much. Takes us to Toby.
Do you have my written report, which kind of summarizes where we're looking at on the Show Me Strong grant project? Kind of a wide variety of media outlets that we're using. And also some different regions, including obviously St. Louis area. We actually did get some information regarding radio in the Memphis area, so we're gonna be looking at adding that to the package as well. Using digital billboards, radio, and a heavy amount of Facebook. We'll be working with a company to put together that program in the coming weeks also. And then also in here, we have upcoming events, including this weekend, we have a bluegrass concert at Lyons Park. That'll be 10:30 to 12:30 on Saturday. If anyone has questions.
I just wanted to commend you on a couple things. First of all, I live and work right across from the Welcome Center. And I think you're over there seven days a week. You're up there before I even get up and you're there when I get home. And I also think I saw you volunteering to pick up trash at the Lyons Park and everything else around town. So I just wanna say, not only are you doing a great job for the Welcome Center, but you're doing a great job for our community, so thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve?
Evening, everyone.
Evening.
Uh, let's see here. Last month, we had a lightning strike during the storm, I think it was, it was on a Thursday. That's, that lightning took out a well, well number four, down at the well field. That well was replaced the next day. We also had some damage to the point-based booster station. Electric motor out there and a variable frequency drive. Still waiting on total cost repairs for that, for, for happy to get submitted. Besides that, everything else is running pretty good. Waterline project kicked off this past Monday. All the main lines are ran, our main line is ran on Cedar Lane. They'll have to do a pressure test over the weekend, they'll come back next week. Once they pass a back D sample and they'll come back and tie the connections in. At that point, we'll abandon the old transite line and, and get moving on the next project. Tomorrow, they will be on La Porte Street. And maybe if they get to it, portion of Roberts, or Roberts and Biltmore, they're just gonna be potholing and verifying pipe diameters and sizes, so. So good to see that going along. As you see, the skater computer was replaced at the water plant. Happy to say that's still working just fine, so. Anybody got anything? Yes?
Steve, whenever we bid out a water main or a water line replacement, does that include just patching the street or just backfilling it with gravel until we have to come along as a street department in?
No, where we lay water mains, it will be patched. That's in the contract.
What size are they putting in?
Six inch.
And what was there, four?
Four inch. Now, if it's in the, if it's in the specs to overlay the entire street or something, I mean, anything can be put in the specs, so.
Any questions?
One more, Steve. I noticed here that the staff performed 74 work orders. How do those work orders get generated and who does it?
Uh, they're generated through City Hall, through the work order program. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon or evening?
Good afternoon, chief, everybody. Evening, chief.
Does anybody have any questions? I have the report there, not much really to, to report from last month, so. Still full staff, guys are, are doing well, everything seems to be moving along.
What kind of, it says research and cost-effective training options. Is there any kind of specific training center?
We've, we've talked, I've talked to city administrator Wells about that. In the past, have contracted with mineral area to do, we have to do so many continuing education hours a year. Would really like to move more towards a specialized training that would actually benefit the city, benefit the officers as opposed to just going and getting the minimum, you know, to satisfy their, their requirements, but actually find something that will be a little bit more specialized and benefit us all. So we're looking at online options and also how cost-effective it would be to maybe even travel for some, you know, assuming it worked out budget-wise, so. Yes, sir.
I had a question from the last information you gave us. We were talking about these capital items, the $96,000 price tag for those two cars. When those cars are disposed of, do you get a credit back for whatever those are sold for?
We don't, it goes to the general fund. Those monies just go back into the city's, city's fund.
So why wouldn't, why would the department, whether they transfer a vehicle from one department for the other, why wouldn't the department giving that up get a credit for that value of that asset?
The idea is that we've already paid for it, so if we move it from one place to another, then we're, we're looking at cost savings by doing that. Some cities do, they'll, they'll, they'll make the department that gets it make credit for that or pay for it.
Right.
I've never done that, I've always just transferred.
Yeah, I mean, that would.
And it's really all out of the general fund for the most part anyways, we operate out of the general fund. It would be different if it was going to Alliance or something like that that isn't actually under our umbrellas, has been my, my impression in the past, so. But, you know, the bottom line on the general budget is, is gonna be the same either way, so.
And when you sell those vehicles, so I think you had said this dollar amount includes outfitting that vehicle, lights.
Correct.
Whatever else. So when we sell a vehicle, we sell it fully equipped, we just take?
We, we take what we can use off of it. If, if, you know, the side iron boxes or whatever cannot be used, then they're really not gonna be worth selling either. I mean, if, if we get rid of it because they're, they're general, they don't work anymore. Typically, we try to, we've done both. We've left some of the striping on, we've taken all the striping off. Just kind of depends on where the vehicles are going. We're kind of moving towards just removing all the striping when we get rid of the vehicles, just to eliminate any confusion. And then, like I said, any light bars or anything that we can use on the next vehicle, we do. And anything that comes out that is, is just not serviceable, just, you know, if we can surplus it and sell it, we do. If it's, if it's just trash, then we, we surplus it and get rid of it.
I was just wondering, because I heard you said that last vehicle sold for $6,100. You know, is that about the normal amount that we're getting out of those vehicles or?
Those were the first of the, the toruses that we've sold, but that was kind of the going rate on, on gov deals, what they were, what they were selling for. You know, the, there, there were police package toruses that we priced. But, I mean, I think that was out the bid, I don't know.
Yeah.
So that was.
And that door has had some miles on it, and then we had, it was actually two vehicles, so it was also a Crown vehicle with that, but it had been driven into the ground.
Yeah.
That was the $100 one.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
And just so I'm reading this correctly, are we gonna possibly see that grant at the next meeting, that application?
We're hoping to, Sergeant McClure is preparing that now, so.
That'd be great, thanks, chief.
Other questions?
Thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief.
Committee reports?
Surprise, surprise, we'll get more. Sorry, Joe. So, Sunday, we had the disc golf tournament. That was a really great turnout, they had 90 registered throwers. I think there was only a couple that weren't able to show, but they did have a wait list as well of a few members. We even had, I saw some members of the public stop at the park and watch a few holes and seemed like a really positive event. Everybody was physically distancing, they wore masks and stuff when they came to check in, so. All good things there, a lot of positive comments about our park. We had our meeting on, our August meeting on Tuesday, where Donzy Park Planning presented the final draft of the Pierre Marquette Park Master Plan. The, the board unanimously, unanimously approved it, so we expect that to come to a work session for us in September and then go to vote for approval. No real changes in that from the brief that I sent you all recently, but we can go over that in the future. Other than that, not a lot to report. We will be down another member here in the future, so looking for two voting members at this time.
And that's due to an individual moving outside of the city?
Moving outside of the city limits, yes.
And Ashley, are there any, are any of the park board members also members of the local disc golf? Is it a club?
Uh, yeah, so there's a, a local club, it's St. John's Disc Golf Throwers. They have a Facebook group and there's a lot of interaction there. They have league nights on many nights. The park board president, John Conard, he throws a bit. I don't know that he ever attends league nights, but he's, he'll throw with the guys that are organizers of the club. And they're starting to rope me into, to the sport as well, so.
That's good.
It's all fine if you've never played.
They've just done so much to spruce up, you know, not, not just for themselves, but for everybody in that park. So I, I just think that it might be nice to have a presence from them on the board as well.
Yeah.
And I really commend them. Even if no one's willing to take on that role, that's great, what they've been doing.
Absolutely. And actually, the tournament on Sunday, the tournaments have a few different ways of raising some money. There's an ace pot, so a hole in one pot, if anybody hits it, they can split that. So they buy into the pot and 50% of it goes to whoever the organizers want to donate to and they actually donated their 50/50 funds of different things that are closest to the pend, their ace pot, to the local club. Because the club is wanting to get some signage on the course. Typical of what you'd see at a golf course with the par and the distance. So they're saving up for that and we've got a pretty good working relationship with them right now with me and John and a couple other members in communication with them, so we can make sure they get what they need.
That's great.
But they've done a lot for our parks and it's really appreciated. I think that's all I got.
Anything else? We'll move on to public comments. We have somebody with, wanna make any public comments? If you come to the podium, please.
Thank you, sir.
Tell us who you are.
My name is Philip Kwan. I come to you all as a city resident, as a husband to an immunocompromised wife who takes weekly injections for her condition. I also come to you as a father of four with two infant children at home. Sorry, I just had a discussion on my mother earlier. And a son whose mother is currently undergoing chemotherapy and radiation treatments for brain cancer that was diagnosed last year. I have a couple comments I'd like to read from some social media from some surrounding counties. If your mask works so well, then why does it matter if I wear one? Why are you so afraid? St. Genevieve County resident, August 26, 2020. I've seen family doctors and healthcare workers in stores and restaurants not wearing a mask, so I feel I can follow right along. Perry County resident, August 25, 2020. In response to St. Louis News Channel 4 reporting on the rise of cases in St. Francis County, maybe that will get the county commissioners to make more than a strong recommendation. St. Francis County resident, August 26, 2020. I want to communicate the following experiences of my own to capture my qualifications and my ability to speak intelligently on this topic. I want you all to know that the statements that I make now are of my own opinion and do not reflect any of the organizations that have been so mentioned. Over the past 10 years, I have spent my time as a Marine Corps infantry officer. I've deployed overseas on four separate occasions and conducted operations ranging from counterincertainty to crisis response. I've led small groups, as small as four-man teams and as large as several hundred. I've responded to crises, I've responded to multiple contingencies. And additionally, I served in a collateral role as my unit's chemical, biological, radiological, and nuclear response officer. And I've communicated and executed crisis response contingency planning, sometimes in a matter of hours. Furthermore, I have a degree in biology where the majority of my study was spent in community and evolutionary biology. I have no less than 10 physicians in my family, two of those physicians specializing in immunodeficiency diseases. As I've mentioned in my previous correspondence to both county and city officials dated on July 15, July 31, and August 19, our ability to make a decision before a decision is forced upon us is rapidly closing. As we look to our surrounding areas, we find ourselves in the final second of the final hours for us to take bold action. During times of crisis and uncertainty, people look to leaders. Leaders are elected and placed in their positions of service for these exact moments. We, as leaders, have an expectation to uphold. Leaders make decisions which are not always popular, I understand that. Those decisions are not always right, yet those decisions are always required. Our decision to not act, to do nothing, in effect, is a decision itself, and that decision must be a deliberate one. The conscious choice to be reactionary in nature. No conflict has ever been resolved on the defense. No sporting event has ever been won on the defense. Arguably, you could say a very strong football team, a very strong defensive football team can win championships, but at some point, that defense has to become offensive in nature. That defense waits for that opportune moment, for that fumble, or that turnover, or that interception, and becomes offensive in nature. And we are waiting right now, our ability to make no decision, we're waiting for that opportunity to present itself. What if that opportunity never comes? What happens if that opportunity comes and we're so far behind the scoreboard and it's that late in the fourth quarter that we can make no decision? If we choose to do nothing, we must consciously accept this outcome. As communicated in my earlier comments from the public, from those social media pages that I mentioned, much uncertainty exists in the perception of the citizens in the surrounding area. That is due to misinformation, misunderstanding, and miseducation. Citizens are confused and leaders are responsible for mitigating those effects. Without detail, but I will provide that upon request, I recommend the following. And I understand, and I will address the point about the health department here in a moment. First, we must decide, we must decide on the course of action. We must decide what steps we must take to prevent further damage and to mitigate future issues for both a public health and economic perspective. Our options are not limited to complete isolation and lockdown, as we saw in March, nor are we limited to the current guidelines, existing in recommendation only and no action. If we are deliberate in our actions, we can protect both the welfare of our citizens and their health and also mitigate the economic impacts of COVID-19. If we choose to do nothing in time, we will both have adverse effects in the, excuse me, in those areas. Second, we must communicate our course of action, and I heard that mentioned multiple times at the beginning of this meeting, on how to consider how that perception of whatever decisions are we made through that course of action are perceived by the public. We must communicate that in a way that is digestible to the lowest common denominator. In my past life experiences, we refer to that term as strategic messaging. We have a variety of resources available to us, I know we mentioned them, the newspaper and the radio, but we have a variety of other resources that I've communicated to other city officials. We have the community board or the, at the community center, the board there, the sign in front of the hospital. Country Mar has a sign, again, very visual areas where information can be communicated. And finally, we need to act. Our courses of actions must be implemented and we must lead by example. We must understand not only the first, but the second and third order effects of our decisions, both publicly, those public decisions and our individual decisions. As leaders, if we communicate to the public the importance of social distancing and wearing a mask but not abiding by those guidelines ourselves, our efforts will be for naught. Perception of both our actions and our beliefs become that reality. That is the burden of leadership. And trust me, I have led more individuals in my lifetime than I've ever cared to leave, laid, and I've buried more friends, excuse me, than I've cared to bury. Two years ago, while I was living in this city, I was conducting counterincertainty operations against ISIS in the Middle East. And during my time there, a fellow Marine officer of mine, his name was Captain Moses Novas, he and I worked side by side. I had a small four-man team, five included myself, as did he. We worked side by, side by side every single day, conducting anti-ISIS operations. March 8, 2020. I recommend you Google his name, Moses Novas. On March 8, 2020, Moses Novas walked out of the sunlight and into a dark tunnel right next to his second-in-command gunner, Sergeant Diego Paul. Moses and Diego were killed dead. The next four hours. The next four hours resulted in a massive gun battle to recover their bodies. Days later, their remains and their personal effects were flown to Dover Air Force Base in Delaware. Because of the restrictions of COVID-19, his family was unable to recover his remains, to recover his personal effects until May. Because of the failure of leadership for those individuals in those areas, you had a grieving wife and four children, again, a really good friend of mine, that were unable to bring their dad home. That is the second and third order effects of our failure to lead, of our failure to make decisions. The first order of our effects of those decisions, the worst, is that minor inconvenience of wearing this mask and protecting our fellow citizens, if that, if we can even consider it a minor inconvenience. But this minor inconvenience has the potential to avoid and mitigate the suffering of many individuals. This is not the only measure that we should consider. As alone, this action will not be effective as the collective, yet is the first step and the most visual one at that, to ensure the protection of our community, which has come together through so much over the past several years. We had the floods of ninety-three, I grew up in this area, the community came together. We've had multiple storm damages, we've had tornadoes come through areas, and our community has risen to that occasion. Why do we struggle so hard with this one? I understand we cannot control the effects of our neighbors, but we can control what we can control, and all around us, the situation gets worse every single day, and we have individuals that are waiting for the situation to develop further. What further development do we want before we choose to make a decision? Again, I thank you all for your time and your consideration. As always, I am humbly at your service for whatever may be required of me. Thank you all for your time and for your listening.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Yes.
Thank you for your support.
Are there any other public comments?
I'd love to, uh, follow up. Uh, I know we got a late-day email today, um, advising us that it's not on the agenda, um, so we don't wanna, for, for the sake of community input, we don't wanna get too far into discussing the coronavirus, um, and our response and what we might do, um, but I'd like it to be something that's added to every agenda, um, until further notice, um, to allow the conversation when needed. Um, so, I'd, I'd like to talk about it next week and then, our next meeting, and then after that, I'd still like it to be on the agenda, just a coronavirus check-in if we need to, because I feel that we need to, every meeting just asks, is there something that we can be doing better? And that might change, um, yeah, before we can get it on the agenda and stuff, so if it's on there, the community can, can expect us to have a check-in on it, so.
Can we add a motion on a second or two?
Oh, yeah, I mean, you just, I mean, unless there's some, actually, David, is that a question?
If we need a motion, then I motion to add it to every agenda moving forward.
Uh, I'm, I know you're getting a couple of calls, I've gotten calls, and one of the big things I'm hearing from folks is that they don't wanna shop in town anymore because businesses are not asking their employees, their customers, whomever, to take the precautions. So, I know we all want the economy to open back up and that's one concern, but I have a big concern about things starting to go back down, and that's, from an economic perspective, that's, that's a big concern.
And, and I think if we start talking about this every meeting, even just as a check-in, we might find solutions that, um, as Philip mentioned, it doesn't have to be one extreme or the other, um, a complete shutdown or free-for-all. There are ways that we can, can balance this out to support economic development, you know, the economic side of it, but also maintain the, the safety and, um, comfortability of our residents. Um, so I think it just needs to be an ongoing conversation.
Yeah, we'll just add it, we'll put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Paul, you had mentioned earlier that the director of the Health Department, that position was gonna be filled soon.
Well, we hope so.
Right.
There's no guarantees right now.
I mean, I think, you know, a person from that department attending our meetings, uh, you know, almost as a department or a staff report here, uh, I think would be helpful and stuff.
We can ask that, but like I say, they're, be very mindful that they're overtaxed right now and they don't have a lot of help. And there, there are avenues that we, there's avenues, we can get avenues, we have avenues to find out what this town's doing and, and keep everybody informed.
Uh, with the, with the meetings that the commissioners have, are those, um, how are those publicized? Is it recorded or anything?
Yes, it is. They're recorded, they, they gotta, Michelle takes minutes.
She takes notes, yeah. It's not video recorded.
Not, not video recorded.
Like, how, how does the public, the, yeah, I, I see the reports in the newspaper and stuff like that, um, but you have to wait till Tuesday, Wednesday.
You know, the Sun Times News, they, they do it, they have their minutes in the Sun Times News.
Yeah, so it's published there with their agenda and then.
A little bit more detail in the newspaper, on the, on the Sun.
Just, just asking so we can know how to share that best with our constituents, um, for whatever their, uh, media.
Those are public meetings, too. I, I, I'm thankful that Mr. Kwan came tonight, you know, to, to talk about it, and anybody, the people, I encourage the people that I talked to this week to, to come to the meeting and talk about it, 'cause that's what that public comment's for, you know, so.
Very good. Very good. Okay, if there's no other, any other public comments, look at, uh, move on to the consent agenda. Move through.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, at this time, at six-thirty-five, we're gonna have a public hearing. And a public hearing will be held to give citizens the opportunity to comment on the property tax rate proposed to be set by the City of Saint Genevieve, a political subdivision. The tax rate should be set to reduce revenues which would, which the budget for the fiscal year 2021 shows to be required for property tax.
Okay, so in front of you, the state auditor proposed the, the tax rates, and you'll notice the public safety was proposed at the point-two-six-nine-three. Um, if the city adopted that, that would take us over the one-dollar mark, so last year it was proposed to, um, in the ordinance to do the point-two-six-eight-four, and that puts our tax rate up right at one dollar. So, in the ordinance or the bill number forty-three-eighty-three before you, it'll be, it won't be the point-two-six-nine-three, it'll be the point-two-six-eight-four, which is the same as last year.
Yeah. Any other comments? Sit back, we'll close the public meeting at, the public hearing at six-thirty-six. Takes us to old business, Bill my, Bill number forty-three-eighty, an ordinance amending the City of Saint Genevieve Code of Ordinances, Chapter one fifteen, City officials, Article six, City Administr, City Administrator, Section one fifteen, Doc. two-ten, powers and duties in Chapter one forty, competitive bidding policy is set forth below. Move through.
Second.
All right, a roll call, please.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Eidman?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderwoman Arberster?
Yes.
Eight, yes, zero knows, Bill number forty-three-eighty now becomes ordinance forty-three-oh-four.
Thank you. Bill number forty-three-eighty-one, an ordinance of the City of Saint Genevieve, amending the City of Saint Genevieve Personnel Manual is set forth below.
Motion to approve.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Arberster?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Eidman?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Eight, yes, zero knows, Bill number forty-three-eighty-one now becomes ordinance forty-three-oh-four.
Thank you. Takes us to new business, Bill number forty-three-eighty-three, an ordinance of the City of Saint Genevieve levying a tax on the residents of the, of the city for the year twenty-twenty. Move through.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for a second reading?
Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Very good. Second reading of Bill number forty-three-eighty-three, an ordinance of the City of Saint Genevieve levying a tax on the residents of the city for the year twenty-twenty. Move through. Second. Have a roll call, please.
Alderman Eidman?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderwoman Arberster?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Eight, yes, zero knows, Bill number forty-three-eighty-three now becomes ordinance forty-three-oh-five.
Thank you. Is there any other business? Any, uh, communication? If there's no other business, uh, I will call this meeting adjourned. We'll go right into our work session. If you need a minute, or let's take five minutes.